We'd like to call the meeting, the City Council, to order. 6:06 PM, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Teoman.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to call up Pastor, we got Pastor Stokes and Pastor Fletcher to say, offer a word of prayer. And now Pastor Fletcher, you have a...
Fluker. Fluker, Fluker.
Fluker, I'm sorry. Thinking of someone else, sorry. You have an event tonight, so please announce that after you give us word of prayer. You go ahead.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council meeting, constituents of the city, let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this moment, and we thank you for this season that we're in. Now, as we come together to meet, bless every word that is spoken, every movement that's made, that you get the glory. It is in Jesus' name that we do everything decent and in order. Thank God, amen.
Amen.
To the great city of Calumet City, to our mayor, yours truly, a part of our National Church, Church of God in Christ, I am running for the secretary position for the General Council of Pastors and Elders. We have forty-two thousand elders and twelve thousand pastors, and I will serve as the secretary for the General Council of Pastors and Elders from this great city of Calumet City. Tonight is the in-person rally at All Nations Church of Chicago, and after the City Council meeting, if you're not busy, I would love for you to come. 520 Sibley Boulevard, to the All Nations Church of Chicago for a rally to support Pastor Andre Fluker and my lovely wife, who is running for the trustee board for the National Church. We're making history, we're the first couple in the history of Church of God in Christ that is running for a national office at the same time. We solicit your prayers, your support, and those of you that are in the Church of God in Christ, your vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So tonight, I would like to, we have a presentation on the agenda regarding our Shopper's World. If I can have a motion to deviate from the regular order of business to present Greg, who's gonna present from his company, and tell us about Shopper's World. This is an economic development opportunity for the city. We've had many discussions about this. We've engaged Greg and his company to go out and look at the property, work with Cook County Land Bank. So if there's a motion to deviate from the regular order of business at 6:09, motion made by Alderman Smith.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're in deviation. Greg will turn everything over to you to introduce yourself, your company, and what we're talking about tonight.
All right, just wanna say thank you to the council and the mayor again for giving me an opportunity to be here today. My name is Greg Williams, and I'm the president and principal architect of Gregory Ramone Design Studio. We're an architecture firm, we're located in Chicago, but we've done and do work all over the city, and also in other states in the US, too. Just, we have a lot of information we wanna get through tonight, so I'm gonna try to be as quick as possible about going through here. Just, I'll give you a little bit more information and background on what we do, but also, we'll get into talking about the project purpose for this, looking at redoing this redevelopment project of the shopping center. Talk about some of the visions and goals that we discussed with the mayor for that site, and then we'll review the concept design, and then talk about some potential next steps on how you move forward from that piece there. So, again, our firm is in Chicago, we've, you know, worked all over the US, we've done numerous projects. When I first started the company, I started in healthcare, and have been working in the industry for over twenty years. So, again, just to clarify, we are the architects, we're not a developer. I think that would be the next step for, one of the next steps for moving the project forward, is to connect with the developer and start going through some additional analyses and other, you know, community meetings to make sure that the development meets the needs of the surrounding area and the folks that it'll be developed for. As far as, you know, what we do typically, this is a good example in terms of providing services related to pre-design and programming, very similar to what we're doing here. We started by having conversations with the mayor about the project, understanding some of the goals and the ideas for taking that existing shopping center, which is underutilized right now, and redeveloping that. The other piece of that is, we'll get into that a little bit more, but a lot of what we're doing and talking about tonight is this programming and feasibility study, and then the concept design portion. One of the things that we strive to do on every project is, this statement, I think, really sums it up, designing experiences that create change where we work. And a lot of times, that's done through making sure we have the right conversations with the people who are gonna be impacted by that design, as well as making sure that it's designed with everyone that's gonna use it being in mind there. So, let's talk about, a little bit about the purpose of the project. I'm sure everyone is familiar with the site, but this is an aerial map view, just kinda showing, and that star in the center represents where the site is. And so these circles that you see on the screen really represent these radiuses that we tend to look at from our urban planning standpoint, because that really tells us, starts to tell us, how long does it take someone to get somewhere from that center point? So you got the one-mile radius, and then a half-mile and a quarter-mile. Those are represented by the, the red is the smaller one, that's the quarter-mile, the orange is the half, and then the one-mile, the larger one. What we tend to focus on, when we're looking at developing, doing a development like this, these larger master plan projects are the quarter-mile and the half-mile, because that's, what those are equate to is a five-minute walk and a ten-minute walk. Because a lot of times, that's what people are willing to walk to get somewhere, to a particular amenity or a service, whatever. So what we do is, we look to see, when we're, you know, taking a look at an existing site, what type of amenities are right around in that area. So, looking at this site, we know that, that the overall site is surrounded by school districts, we do know that there is some, you know, larger-scale shopping amenities nearby, some residential, but when you look at that orange circle, you can see that there's very little residential that, that falls within that space. You got some park, you got the forest preserve to the north of our site, but very little residential there. And one of the things that we're looking at and talking about with this project is incorporating quite a bit of housing here, too, in addition to incorporating some additional retail and amenities, too. When we, we've gone out to the site and we talked about the project with the mayor, we know that Shopper's World and Shoe Carnival, those are really the key anchor stores that are there, and those are really the ones that are utilized right now, all the other space is vacant. So, we, we look at this to try and understand, are there opportunities to revitalize that area and create something that will bring some life back into that space and that area over there, too? The site itself is eleven acres total, and of that eleven acres, one hundred and thirty thousand square feet of that is the existing building, which equates to three acres. So it's a fairly large site, and a lot of that's underutilized. So really, looking to see how can we take advantage of that to develop something that would, you know, make better use of the space now, based on kinda the needs and things that people are looking for these days. So, this image here is just an aerial, looking at the property, and these are some other images around the site. One of the things that we did when we first started the project, too, was we went through the series of existing conditions analysis, because the building, as far as we know, from what we got from Cook County, it was constructed in the seventies, and I believe there's been some additions over that time, but there hasn't been a lot of, you know, maintenance done on the building, too, because I know when we were out on site, we noticed that there are several vertical cracks in the, in the walls that kinda radiated down to the, to the grade or to the slab there. So, I, I think, just visually looking at it, that was the extent of the visual observations of the building, but a part of that process was, we went through and we did 3D laser scanning of the building, which is basically so that we could generate existing drawings, because there were no existing conditions drawings for this property, at least Cook County doesn't have them. So, we did that to get an understanding of the overall existing layout. We did what are geotechnical analysis, which were, basically, they take cores, six-inch, about six-inch to eight-inch diameter cores into the ground around the property, so that we could analyze and see the soil bearing capacity. That would tell us, because we're thinking about, we were thinking about putting an addition on here, would that be feasible to do? And so we did find out through that analysis that the soil would support a taller structure at this property on the site, so we were able to confirm that as we were going through. Another piece that we did early on with this was, we had a roofing contractor come out to do an analysis on the roof, to just let us know, is this a patch job, or is this a complete replacement? And so it turned out, because of the age of it, it would definitely need to be something that gets replaced, but, again, thinking about what the proposal is, a portion of that would get replaced, but a portion of this, because of the new addition, would be new roofing anyway, as well. So, when we, when we think about the, the project itself, we're, we kinda got into thinking about what are the overall goals. So, these are, these bullet points here just really hit on the goals that we were looking at, and, and thinking about as we were working on and developing design, really meeting current needs of people and the residents who are looking for, it's just more, more engaging opportunities or developments that have housing, retail, restaurants, more of that in that area, and recreation, too. Because I think, when we look at that site, having some of the outdoor, potential outdoor spaces, too, around in the area would be, would be ideal, and really just transforming this property into something that will make it useful twenty-four-seven, basically. So, when we thought about that and thinking about the project vision, this is where this kind of comes in, is really a vibrant, thriving development that will help with the community development, economic growth. Those things will provide a catalyst for, not only this, but also other developments around here, because we know directly to the east of this property, there's another mall, or, you know, a true mall across there that could probably benefit from some of the same ideas as this. So, looking and talking about the concept design, what we did, too, is, a lot of times what we like to do is, see what other examples are out there to see what's available. So that's a part of this precedent study, to see how it's been done, who else has done it. This example that we saw is one in California Westminster Mall, and this is an aerial of that site, again, I put this up here to just show there are similarities in terms of the overall site. There's usually a sea of parking around the building, you got a large building there, and this one, again, same situation, shopping trends have changed over time, so they were doing the same thing, is looking to see how they could redevelop this property to be more, a more utilized space. So, in here, this is another existing building, existing, a picture of the existing property, and these are some of the proposed concepts that they had on that project. Again, they're incorporating amenities such as retail, restaurants, housing, and they accomplished this with vertical additions on here, but also, you can see there's some exterior park space as well, that they've transformed from, a lot of the parking areas out there. And these are just a couple of other examples, too, that were included, that we, that we saw as we were looking this up. So, a lot, this idea is not, it's not old, or it's not a new idea, but at the same time, there aren't a lot of examples yet of that being completed, but there are some that are in process right now. So, developments like this can take a while to get to the, to the, you know, to the final design, too. So really, what we're talking about today is a very early, very, very early stages of it. Things that we consider, what are always important for us to look at, we think about building heights, setbacks, what are the design features, what kind of open space requirements are we gonna have there, and so on. Some of these things will continue to be developed as the project moves on. So, when we talked about the, this program areas that will be included in design, the spaces are, basically, these are some spaces that the mayor has confirmed, and has gotten commitments on some of these restaurants that we've got listed here. So, when we were looking at doing the development, laying off the space plan, we utilized those, those restaurants as spaces that would be included here. The other piece of this is, we have a residential that's included here, we have a mix of one and two-bedroom units, as well as some, some three and four bedrooms on the upper floors primarily, and then there's also gonna be residential amenities, some outdoor amenity space and other buildings support spaces. So, here, this is the, this is the overall site plan, so I will, if I can point here. You can see, north is up on here, by the way, so the building that we're looking at is this, the kinda curved linear form, that's the tower that's gonna come and sit on top of the existing building. There's also gonna be a redevelopment of that outdoor parking lot area, to turn some of that into a green or, a green space or a park area. So, the circles that you see on here are not the areas for, you know, those particular areas, such as outdoor performance, or the, the food vendors, that's not necessarily saying the design of it, that's just saying how much space we would allocate towards those things out there. But this is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet of outdoor park area that could be used, and that would be an amenity for the, the new development here. And so here's some images, this is an aerial view, and really what we've incorporated, or what's being incorporated here, because now, adding additional retail and restaurant spaces, as well as the residential, this becomes a mixed-use space, and then there's, you have the ground-level plaza area that would be extended out from where it is existing now. There's also a couple of rooftop, the second floor would have a rooftop amenity space that would be accessed by the, the restaurant that's on that floor, as well as the entertainment space up there, and all of the other floors beyond that, as you can see here, would be all of the, the rest of the, the residential, from floors three through eight. So, this ground floor plan is, is just to show those brown spaces that you're seeing, those are, would be considered business shoe spaces, so you have your, all of the restaurants, as well as one of the other things we talked about incorporating in, into this footprint would be shared work or co-working space, potentially, having that there. But at this level, you have all of the restaurants, as well as Shopper's World and Shoe Carnival, we still have a space in here, but their square footage gets reduced in this particular, this particular design, because right now, they really have the majority of that space over there. So, the second floor, as we're looking at this, the, the bluish-purple color represents the, those entertainment spaces, as well as the restaurant space, and then you have the roof terraces accessed by both of those there, and then floors three through seven would be the, the levels for all of the residential apartment units. And at the eighth level, right now, what we're showing, the penthouse level, you'd have some larger units, and then a roof terrace that would be accessed by the residents. And these are just a few of the images that we put together for that. This is one kinda looking at, going into the main interior of the building, and some, just materials right now, we're thinking, could be metal panels, high-pressure laminate panels, or a fiber cement panel for the exterior. So, as I mentioned, some of the investigations that we did early on, related to the geotechnical analysis, that really allowed us to think about the structural framing. So, the report that was put out, that we provided to the city, goes into more detail about the structural framing options, because we looked at both concrete as an option, as well as steel. Steel tends to be, tends to be a cheaper route. It's from a structural engineering standpoint, concrete is easier to do the engineering on, but I know from a construction standpoint, steel would be, usually is a more cost-effective approach. And a portion of this existing structure, like I mentioned, would remain, because we're not affecting that whole footprint, the whole hundred and thirty-square-foot area footprint, but we are, the portion that we are doing is about seventy thousand square foot of that existing roof, so the other half of that, the structure would remain, we'd be replacing the roof there. And then we also, just last thing, we looked at another, just another option that was not as curved linear, something that followed the form of the existing building more so, but I think this is something that we would pick up with a developer, just to go through other options as we move forward, if the project continues on from there. So, in terms of next steps, if we were to do additional investigations, I think you definitely wanna do more where we can get to, get into a little bit more of the existing building integrity. We were not able to do any core samples of the walls or inside of the building, since that isn't owned by the city right now, but I think, understanding if there are any other issues with the existing foundation, we wanna understand that. Definitely identifying a developer, and also performing a market analysis, so that, which would also be a part of the, you know, looking at demographic studies, seeing, is the, is the, the unit mix or the, the spaces that are being proposed, is, is that right for the area right now? Is it going to, is that gonna pan out? And then also understanding, or, you know, competitive landscape, are there any other developments coming? Are there some that would offer similar things in the area? Those are some of the things that we'd wanna think about in a, moving forward here. And then also, from there, going through a development plan, and establishing the financial plan, understanding what the capital stack would be for this, how, how do you get to the funds to pay for that entire development? And again, the pricing information was put in the, in the report for this, and from there, there's, you know, community engagement, more meetings and things, too, as well that would have to happen. But I know I had a little bit of time, hopefully I got through everything, we're now at the Q&amp;A session, so. Anybody have any questions that we wanna go through?
You went past the five minutes, but that's all right. Well, for the record, Alderman Gardner is in the meeting at 6:12 PM. Are there any questions for Mr. Williams? Just for the record, my office is working with not only the state of Illinois, but the Cook County Land Bank, through myself, Alderman Gardner, which is our appointed representative, working with a developer, we've secured the restaurants that Mr. Williams has put on there. Now, the goal will be for the city to work with the Cook County Land Bank, state of Illinois, our ask from the state, to the state of Illinois, will be for them to help fund this project, public-private partnership through the Illinois Closing Fund. So, we wouldn't ask the city to take out any bonds for this project, we would ask through the state of Illinois, so we will bring those resolutions before the City Council, asking the governor and the state of Illinois to help fund this project. The potential for this project was sixty-eight million?
So, the potential, in the report, we listed a hundred and ten million?
Okay. That was forty-some million off. I think the limit with the state is sixty million, so that any developer would have to do that difference.
Okay.
Are there any questions for the council members regarding the boring samples, or what was presented today? If not, Mr. Williams, thank you for the presentation, thank you for doing all of the work on it. I know you submitted all that information to the council, so if they have any questions, they can contact you afterwards, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. While we're still in deviation, we wanna address two other matters. We would like to bring John Kasperic up to talk about the budget. We started our budget process, we presented a balanced budget to the City Council, we do have hearings, we invite the public to come out. Our next hearing will be Monday, the fifteenth, also the sixteenth, the twenty-second. By law, we have to post the budget, the draft budget, ten days before we pass it. We are gonna post it in the newspaper, and then also, we presented it to the City Council. So, John, can you come up briefly and talk about our budget process, along with the work you're doing with Alderman Gardner, who's the chairman of the Finance Committee? John, before you got here, the City Council voted, we're only gonna give you two minutes, so you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, City Cons, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and the public. Yes, I already have public safety Tommy here, it could be an issue for me. Anyway, right now, we're in the process of just starting the budget, the budget meetings. We had one earlier in the week, we had one this past Monday, we have three more scheduled meetings to go over the budget. It will be next week, Monday, next week, Tuesday, fifteenth, sixteenth, and then we'll have another meeting on the twenty-second. As, and the twenty-second meeting is more of a recap meeting, we'll have already met with the department heads to go over their budgets, we're also gonna address the, the salary arduance as well at that meeting, and any other things that may have, may have been brought up during the course of the bu, the budget process. As the mayor indicated, the, the budget is a balanced budget, the estimated revenues for the general fund alone are in excess of fifty million, however, the expenses are also at fifty million dollars. So, again, these are estimated revenues, but our treasurer does a fine job of estimating, and we came in very close last year. Does include some grant revenue from our hard-working departments that have gotten additional monies to help subsidize part of the public safety payroll, economic development coming up with various incentives to help new businesses, as well as current businesses. The budget also does include the water sewer fund, it includes a capital projects fund, which is basically made up of major capital grants that we may get, and so we don't put them into the corporate fund, we have them in a separate one, so that money can only be spent, of course, if the grants come in. We also have funding for our police and fire pensions, and just as, again, council as a, okay, as a, as a, as a note, our April thir, April thirtieth, four-thirty-twenty-four contributions to police and fire exceeded the actuarial required contributions, so we'll continue to fund the pensions to the full amount required by the actuaries. There's also a special service area in there that, in our budget, our IMRF slash Social Security Fund are also in the budget, that covers the pensions of the non-public safety, and I believe those are all of the funds. And everybody should be getting the appropriation ordinance soon, because it's already been prepared, I think, over to the mayor. That's it.
Thank you, John. This budget also does not include any tax increases. We know that taxes are sensitive to residents now, since everyone got reassessed and got the assessment from the Cook County Assessor and Treasurer's Office. Our taxes have not gone up in Calumet City, and we were proud of that, and we wanna make sure that everyone knows that. On the agenda tonight, we have an official tax protest that was gonna go to the governor, and it's gonna go to Cook County Board President Tony Prekwenko, Cook County Assessor Fritz Kegge, and also to the treasurer, Maria Pappas. In addition to that, I am filing a bill in Springfield that's gonna address the tax issue for the south suburbs, including Calumet City. We'll give a copy of that to the City Council, it should be ready in a week, but it's my hope, and our hope for the City Council, that we pass not only this resolution tonight, but when we get to Springfield, we'll have support for telling the governor, we wanna designate the entire south suburbs, including Calumet City, a special tax designation, where there's a flat fee, as opposed to assessment after assessment, that's drawing up the taxes. So, we wanna encourage the council to pass that tonight, and then, once we get the bill filed in Springfield for veto session, we'll encourage the council to support that as well. But John, thank you for doing a good job with the, with the budget. Again, we have our budget dates that's on our website, if you have any questions, you can either call my office, or direct them to John, or our city treasurer to answer any questions, or the Alderman regarding the budget. But thank you, John.
Thank you, Alderman, mayor, public.
At this time, is there a motion to go back in the regular session at 6:33 PM? Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Patton. We are back in, all in favor? I'm sorry.
All right.
We are back in the regular session of business at 6:33 PM. On our agenda tonight, we did roll call, we are at item number four on our agenda, which is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on the agenda? If so, please step to the mic. Please step to the mic.
How's everybody doing tonight? My name's Tom Horvath, I've lived in Calumet City for fifty years. Mayor, if you could, did you just say that after the assessor doubled the appraisal of homes, that the taxes didn't go up?
No, I said Calumet City portion didn't go up. So there's nine portions on your tax bill, or eleven?
Well, my taxes were twenty-nine-hundred dollars a year, which is high enough for a little shoebox, eleven-hundred-square-foot home I live in, which is way more than Sao Holland pays, Cal City pays four-point-five-oh percent, where the county norm is two-point-eight-six percent. Now, I went, just went, now, last year, the assessor sent this letter I have here that says, that says, "This won't reflect on your property tax bill, this increase," so we know that's a lie. They preempted a strike to do what they just did to all of us, because I talked to plenty of people in Cal City, and I'm sure you know, Mayor, and my taxes just went from twenty-nine-hundred a year for my eleven-hundred-foot shoebox, to what's gonna be eight thousand, okay? And I don't, and I know people that got the same, that's almost And I don't, and I know people that got the same. That's almost triple. And I don't know how they just say, "Hey, man, you're just going to pay us this money, and there ain't a damn thing you can do about it." What they just did ain't any different than the Middle Ages, when they'd come around door-to-door in chariots or whatever, and knock down your door and take what they want and say it's tax time. There ain't any difference than the Middle Ages. And I'm wondering if you're going to fight for us, mayor? Because I know if I was mayor, I'd already been down there to Preckwinkle's office and say, "These people in Calumet City ain't, ain't getting the damn stuff with this anymore. We doing it since for years, man." Cal City pays 4.50%, higher than, so, highest of the 17 cities that we are in junction with here. And I'm wondering if you're going to fight for us and say, "We ain't having it, man. This, this man pays 3,000 a year." I lived there 50 years. This man can't afford it, man. I'm a stroke survivor, okay? I'm 61. I don't want to move. I'm too old to frickin' move, man. And if I don't pay, what happens? I get thrown out of my family's house that been in my family for 60 damn years. That's what they do to people in this city. Illinois has been going down. People have been leaving for years. And you can listen to Maria Pappas sit and spew her bunk that, "Well, the way things are, is you got three houses vacant on the block, so now, the rest of the people got to pick up that slack, right? There's no vacant houses on my block. Why am I paying eight grand now that I don't have?" I pay for medicines, man. Like I said, I'm a stroke survivor, man. Where does it end? The insurance companies, auto insurance raking us, just raising us, and nobody does nothing about nothing, man. I'm a damn veteran, for Pete's sake, man. I fought for this fucking freedom. I don't see freedom. I hate to get huffy, mayor, but I'm telling you, man, enough's enough, man. You need to go down there, tell them to reverse these bills to the back what they were, because it ain't fair. It ain't fair to human beings. I don't see why the American Liberties Union ain't on the frickin' case, because this is, I don't know what it is, third-world country. This is mid-Ages, just knocking down the doors, taking what you want, slapping you around, and nobody does nothing. All they do is spew the same old lies, which ain't true. All I heard from anyone in Cal City, and probably you, mayor, when you were running for what you're standing at my gates, same thing they all tell us. We don't have a say. Cal City don't have a say. I don't have a say. That's crap. If you wanted a say, you would have that say. And when you're ready to have that say down at Preckwinkle's, I'd go with you, and I bet you, everybody in this goddamn town would go with you, because I know I will. You fight for me, I got, I got your back. I stand fighting side-by-side with you. But it needs to stop. It needs to end now. Don't put up with the lies. Let's file a action lawsuit started by the mayor to say we ain't taking it, man. I'm a veteran, a stroke survivor. I got to live in the doggone street, like so many of them already frickin' do, and now, they want to find the people homeless, because they're homeless, if you ain't watch the news. All we do is suffer, man. And I worked hard all my life, man. Paid my bills, raised my families. For what? For what? For nothing. I'm working for nothing. Now, I got a bill right here for 4,200 frickin' dollars. It should be 1,400, like last year. I was hoping I wasn't the only one.
Listen, 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 Tom. Listen, we're going to keep the quorum, so we don't need you guys shouting in the audience. If you want to come up and talk. Tom, Tom, we are going to fight for you. We have a resolution on, on here tonight.
I hope people will fight with me.
Thank you. We do have a resolution on, on here tonight. I don't think anyone on this City Council has said that Calumet City has not raised the taxes, so we're going to make sure that we keep things in order, and we're going to fight for this city and fight for other communities. Calumet City is number five when it comes to, like, the tax rate. We have kept taxes down. We have brought in programs, but we want to make sure that you're going to help us when we get this bill passed in the General Assembly and we make sure that the assessor pays attention to Calumet City and our fight to lower our Is there anyone else, if you guys want to line up, if there's anyone that want to speak, please line up on the side?
I'll be waiting for my bill to change.
We got you, Tom.
Okay.
If not, I'm going to keep fighting.
Tom.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, mayor, all the aldermen, commissioners, officers, and so forth and so forth. My name is Wanda Smith. I've been a prominent resident here for years. I'm also a small African-American business owner who also has been seeking some type of grant to be a part of the community in all those different buildings they trying to be, but it's also been unsuccessful. Lot of talk, no show. But when it comes to these taxes, and I'm going to make that short and sweet, because he made a lot of elegant points. I'm at 1424 Pulaski Road. I used to be at 301. I just purchased this home, March 27th. Taxes is totally ridiculous. But what I'm going to do, I'm going to get a petition going in my second ward. I'm going downtown. I tried to come here and talk to my mayor. I got upstairs, and when I got upstairs, I got a card put in my face. And I told the young lady, I said, "No, I don't want that." I opened my phone, because I maybe was one of the first 10 who got a chance to have a meeting with the mayor when he first won election that my vote put him in for. I said, "I don't want that." I said, "Because if I made it upstairs, I talked to one nice young lady, then his assistant came." She knew what I was there for. I'm quite sure the word was passed on. By that time, she should have came to me and said, "Here's your appointment, and this is the day that you need to come and have an interview with the mayor." Not give me a card to go back downstairs, as I can say hypothetically, like a slave, and then open up my phone and make the appointment and go home and make it, but I was already here. Second of all, when I voted, I can still say my mayor in here. I voted for the words that he stipulated out of his mouth, and that's to be the mayor of Calumet City, to fix the things that they said that the last mayor did not succeed in doing properly. But when it comes to you swearing on the oath to be the mayor, the mayor does consist, if I'm wrong, I want somebody to correct me, because I'm not a politician. It's for every ward, not just pick and choose which ones. The second ward needs things. The second ward needs budgets fulfilled. My alderman, Mrs. Wilson, I'm going to speak today in her behalf, and I've never made it to one of these meetings. And we go to her and we complain. And I get in my car, and I follow her, and I know she comes here, not hearsay, but what I saw. And she puts it on the desk, and she gives it to whomever, good, bad, indifferent. Then, it's up to the mayor to say yea or nay, approved or disapproved. But a lot of us want to go back and just cuss this lady out and be mistreated. She does her job. Once she takes our complaints and our positive feedback and bring it here, it's done. It's time, it's somebody else's job to listen to those cries. And it's getting bad out here. But I say one thing, I'm not going to yell. I'm not going to cuss. I'm not going to do nothing. I'm going to put one foot in front of the other, and I'm going to make my voice be heard. $8,000 in taxes, I got a double pen. You don't even want to know what it is now. You say eight times what? Two. From March 27th to now. No. What you said you was going to do, do it. We got a budget now. We want to build all these buildings and put all these stores in our community to make revenue, find a daddy, but help the people first. Help us, because we voted you in. We voted Mayor Michelle Lynn. We voted Mayor Michelle Allen. We voted you in. Fill in the dash. Have a good evening.
Good evening, mayor, council. How you all doing? My name is Larry Andrews. I'm one of the co-founders of the Calumet City Thunderbolts Youth Football and Cheer Program, and basically, we're here asking for you all's support. We've been here since 2010. We've worked our way up into what we feel like a real good staple in the community. We have a lot of success in mentoring and monitoring the kids, providing proper placement for them to get that mentorship as well as stay off the streets. As you all know, we're living in the same world. It's rough out here right now. We need support. So, that's what we're here for, to ask for you all to support the organization. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, City Council members. I just wanted to make a correction on the agenda under Financial Matters, number 23. The date says August 12th. It should be August the 3rd. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and the council. I don't know if it's going to make a lot of sense of what I'm going to say right now, because the first man that came to the microphone said it all, but the reason I'm here, too, the same reason that I've been living in here for 18 years. And when I saw my bill, when I opened it up, honestly, I went backwards, couldn't believe it. I was thinking it was an error. But when I started talking to my neighbors and telling me the same thing, $4,000 when I was paying 1,800, six months, every six months, not even 4,000 a whole year. And when I see the second installment for 4,000 and 400, just like my neighbor right here, I, I almost have a head attack like he's talking about it, you know? I'm, I'm very disappointed about, hopefully, you do something about it, because I've been living in, I'm in 18 years in this neighborhood, and honestly, I'm not ready to move out of here, because I got a family to support. I'm the only one working in my family. I got five kids. I, I got five childrens to support, and I'm the only one working. And when I see these bills, you know what is going to happen. The bank is going to send me the letter and erase my payment around, I don't know how much, but I'm already waiting, waiting on to see if you really say that you're going to do something about it. I'm going to be looking into it, if you're really going to help us, because, believe me, the most of the people in here are about this reason. We don't care about no developments or whatever you got. We, this is the major, major thing that you got to take care of first. The people who've been living in here for years, like my man over here, 50 years, how do you feel that he feeling right now? I'm hopeless right now. That's exactly how I feeling right now. And the, the, the first thing, when I opened this letter, I was waiting for this meeting, waiting for this meeting. That's the reason you only see the Spanish guy, and I'm very surprised, because all the Spanish coworkers who live in this neighborhood told me that they were going to be here, and I'm the only Spanish people in here. But I was hoping to explain myself to you, and I hope I did the best, even though that I know how to explain myself very well, but I hope that you understand how I feel exactly my friend, like, right here. And I hope that you're going to do something about for the residents, because they are the ones who put you in. That's it. Thank you so much. My name is Manu Altorres.
How you all doing? I'll be real quick. My name is Michael McGowan. I am a homeowner here in Calumet City. I've been fortunate enough to have second and third generation of family that's lived in Calumet City. I just want to say, first and foremost, thank you to the police station, the police department, I'm sorry, for supporting, providing a sense of safety for our young student athletes. I am a coach, mentor of the Calumet City Thunderbolts. I want to say thank you to anyone that is a part of the park district, as well as the school board, for many years they have supported us. I would like to say, if possible, we would love for the city, support in any way, fashion or form, so we can continue to mentor these kids and sometimes adults and carry on our legacy. Again, we are volunteers. We do donate our time, and we would like to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the City Council during public forum? If not, we're going to move on to our agenda tonight. Item five is approval of minutes. Do you have the minutes before you? Are there any corrections or any changes to the minutes? If not, can someone please make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion.
Motion made by Alderman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. I'm sorry. For the record, Alderman Tillman is in the meeting at 6:26 PM. Motion was made by, or a second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Ted?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Never had to.
Yes. Motion approved 6-0 to pass the minutes of the meeting. Next on the agenda, reports of standing committees, Finance, Alderman Gardner.
No reports tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
While we, we like to recognize our public safety officials as well, we have in the back our police chief, Kevin Kolosch. Chief, you want to wave to everyone? We also have our fire chief, Glenn Bacher, in the back. We have from the Police and Fire Commission, Mr. Butch Carradine. Sitting next to him, we have Pastor Stokes. Up front, we have our deputy fire commissioner, deputy fire chief, Pete Mendenelli. Sorry, Pete. In the back, we have our city administrator, chief of staff, Deanne Jeffrey. We also have in the back Val Williams from our Community Economic Development Department. We have Mr. Mike Bansky, our Crime Free Housing Coordinator. We have our officers, our imitation of our governor, J.B. Pritzker. We also have Sean Howard, and in the back, we have Jerry Surofka, our Water Commissioner, and in the back, we have Director Cheryl Tillman of our Building and Zoning Department. And John Kasperic spoke for five minutes in the back as well. Want to introduce our staff. Public, I'm sorry, Matt. We have Matt Berger, our city engineer tonight, and of course, our city attorney, Mark Sturk. Public Utilities, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. We will have a Public Utilities meeting, the first available date in August. I will send that out once I confirm with the committee. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinance and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, under item 11, New Business Orders and Resolutions, uh, item number two is a resolution protesting Cook County Assessor Property Tax Increases for Calumet City and the South Suburban Communities. Uh, the tax hike in the South Suburbs clearly disproportionately affected those in our communities as it relates to the greater Cook County area. We are hoping this resolution, along with other measures, attract enough attention to this problem that leads to a solution. Uh, we are asking that the Alderman present, uh, support this measure and we'll follow up with everybody afterwards, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, Welfare, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. As newly appointed Health, Education and Welfare Chairman, uh, I'll be setting up meetings with the Superintendent of Schools, Superintendents of Schools, also the library, uh, as they fall under the purview, um, of Health, Education and Welfare. And I hope, uh, from those conversations to have a meeting to discuss any concerns and address any issues, uh, that those organizations in town have. So, um, hope to have a, a report for the first, um, uh, committee meeting at our next regular City Council meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor, um, there will be a Permits and Licensing Committee Meeting called in short order, Alderman Gardner has a couple of items, I believe he wants to come before our committee, and so we may, we may call a Permits and License Committee Meeting or a committee of the whole joint between my committee and his, um, so more information on that to follow.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Smith?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council Reports, let's start, Alderman Smith?
Yes, uh, first and foremost, uh, wanna encourage the suburban residents, continue to report, uh, issues of vacant properties or any type of neglect as well as suspicious activity. Also, the monthly Town Hall Meeting will be held on Saturday, the, uh, July the 20th, from 10 AM to noon, at DA's Banquet Hall on 159th Street in the 7th Ward. Also, uh, I will be scheduling a series of property tax appeals, so please, uh, be on the lookout, uh, for information on that on the city's website. Uh, if there are any questions, uh, please contact my office, 708-891-8197, or email a smith@calumetcity.org, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth Ward, Alderman Patton?
Thank you, uh, I'd like to thank the residents that came out to our sixth Ward Street to Street Meeting last night, um, which was held at the corner of 163rd Street and Shirley. We had a great turnout last night, lots of good questions, uh, I think we were able to solve a number of problems that residents have been, um, trying to get resolved, and we got most of them resolved very quickly, so thanks to everybody that came out to that. Um, and as always, continue to call my office, 708-891-8196 with any issues, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to first start off by thanking all of the, uh, staff, city administration for their support in the loss of my grandmother, um, the support was much needed, thank you all that showed up, flowers, emails, text messages. Uh, next, I would like to let the residents know that I sympathize with them. As a stakeholder myself, uh, would do anything in my power, uh, to stand with the residents and join the fight with the mayor, uh, when we take that fight on. It's gonna be a tough task, but I do sympathize with the residents with the tax hike, tax hike, I experienced a tax increase myself, and so want the residents to know that I stand with you all, uh, and I will be joining the fight. Uh, next, I would like to, uh, thank the Public Works Department for their, uh, their, their, uh, service in the ward, cutting down trees, um, if you see any vacant houses, overgrown vegetation, continue to report those to my office. In the near future, I will be holding, uh, Town Hall Meeting and also Tax Appeal Seminars to further explain tax increases, uh, to the residents and appeals and any unanswered questions that the residents may have. If you need any assistance, call my office, 708-891-8195. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth Ward, Alderman?
Thank you, Mayor, first of all, the guy that makes all things possible, uh, just as a disclosure, I am, I am a little under the weather, sinus issues, uh, no COVID, I'm COVID free. Just wanna thank the residents that came out to the ward meetings and the, uh, people that participated in the paper shredding, uh, I think we had probably about 500 people, so I wanna thank those that, uh, had some dealings with the success of that event, I wanna thank River Oaks Town, uh, Homes Co-op for, uh, hosting. Uh, residents, I'd share your sentiment as regards to the property taxes, my taxes, uh, did increase as well, so we will all be, um, standing together in this fight to, uh, get our taxes back to reasonable amounts if it's at all and realistically possible. As the, as the Mayor stated, uh, the Calumet City portion of the taxes did not increase as it not, hasn't increased in many years. Um, so this is, uh, definitely something that's heartfelt by all the residents and we stand with you as your leaders in this community and we'll stand with you as we fight to get some reasonable resolution to property taxes. Now, we can't be naive and think that, you know, cost of living does go up, most of us moved to the South Suburbs years ago when, you know, to get away from certain elements, and it costs to live in certain places, and this, apparently in somebody's eyes, they think that's the case here in Calumet City, so, uh, we gotta be realistic, it is a big hit, it is a big hit for all of us, um, but again, we're gonna, we're gonna stand with you and fight them, you've heard the Mayor state that there's a, uh, he's gonna be fighting in Springfield for, uh, a property tax stay or, uh, cap in this area, so let's hope and pray for the best results in, in, in that fight, and we have to stand with them in that regard. Residents on Oldsby, I've gotten your calls, uh, we'll be passing those complaints on to Public Works Department, uh, so we, hopefully we can get that resolved in the next few days, uh, and that is all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Third Ward, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also wanna thank the residents that came out to the July 1st, 3rd and 4th Ward Town Hall Meeting. If you want a recap of that meeting, it is posted on my Facebook page, Alderman DeAndre Tillman. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to, uh, reach out to myself, 708-891-8193. The next Town Hall Meeting is August 5th, 6:30, uh, at Downey Park Field House. Uh, additionally, I want to remind the residents that July 24th, we have the I-94 Dalton Road Public Informational Meeting, uh, we really wanna encourage the residents in the Third Ward to attend that meeting as the meeting topic will directly affect us and our ward. So again, that is July 24th, 5 to 7 PM at the Calumet City Public Training Center, which is located at 24 State Street. Uh, I also want to let the residents know that August 17th is the 8th Annual Back to School Picnic for the 3rd and 4th Ward, uh, that is gonna be held in Downey Park, uh, at noon. So look out for more information as we will be putting out those flyers soon, and if any residents want to participate, call my office, once again, that number is 708-891-8193, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Second Ward, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I, I have a lot, but I'll break it up, um. First, um, if you need to contact me via email, please do so at Monae, M-O-N-E as in Edward, T as in Tom, at Alderman Wilson dot com. If you need to contact me by phone, you can call me and text me at 708-586-4990. As you send me text messages of things, um, that are going on in the neighborhood, I do forward them to the appropriate departments so they can be handled, thank you to Public Works and thank you to Director Tillman and her office for the hard work that you've been doing on behalf of the Second Ward. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Wanda Smith, um, she is new to our Second Ward, um, we have several blocks that have been added, we've moved from 3,500 to maybe about 7,500 residents in the Second Ward, um, so thank you, Wanda, for opening your home for the Second Ward Block, uh, Meeting as well as the meeting greet, uh, we had, uh, an amazing time breaking bread and networking with each other. What I'd like to move on to now is the issue of taxes. Um, I, along with my colleagues, do stand behind, uh, the city of Calumet City and the residents. We do thank our mayor for taking steps in his, uh, office, um, here as mayor as well on the state level. Um, but the Second Ward has been dealing with taxes for 28 months. When I took office, um, some of you all remember, if you signed in, I asked you what were your taxes, are they too high? We did an analysis of, of that 28 months ago from recent communications and meetings, and we had some people that were paying $3,500 28 months ago who are now paying $9,000. Uh, what we did, we, we tried to wait and go through the process on the county level and on the state level. The Second Ward has created, and we spoken, have spoken to the Tribune about it, um, a Department of Justice claim. Department of Justice, um, as well as HUD, had, has legislation and policies that make it illegal to redline in communities, meaning you can't, if you're a certain marginalized group, can't go to certain areas. Right now, these property taxes are redlining us in reverse, it's the new form of redlining, it's making it where we can't get out of certain neighborhoods. And the, the gentleman that spoke said that he didn't like what Maria Pappas was saying, but Maria Pappas spoke the truth, we have to take accountability. I have never seen this many people in a council meeting. Our taxes is lightweight gain, it didn't happen overnight. We have to attend not only our council meetings, but everybody that taxes us, the park district meetings, the school board meetings, most of us pay taxes for three school boards, elementary, high school, and District 510, which is the junior college. Do we know where that money is going to, what it's being used for? We also have to draft logical responses. There is a report that came out that said the state of Illinois is 50 out of 50 states in how we fund schools. We're funding schools on the backs of homeowners. We need to figure out a way to restructure that. We're paying money like we have blue ribbon schools here. I live here, I have two kids here, I'm paying for three school districts, but I also pay for private elementary school and private college. Everybody can't make that sacrifice. I do thank, uh, the youth football team for coming because it is a struggle. Having outreach programs may be the difference in keeping the lights on and keeping your kids safe and active. We have to do our part as a community, we can't blame one or any official. If this is your first meeting, I have residents that have lived here 40 years and ask me, what's the address to City Hall? We have to stand up, get engaged, and get active. I will also publicly state what I told the reporter, I will not support any legislation that freezes our taxes. I am requesting that they be reduced, capped, and then frozen. If you freeze me underwater, I'm still underwater frozen. If you freeze me holding a boulder that I cannot support, I'm just frozen, holding a heavy boulder. We need help, we need assistance. Your elected officials live on your block, we are the same. We have the same wants and needs. So, tonight, we have Jazz on the Grass, and tonight, I'm beginning my birthday celebrations, and that's on a lighter note. And so I know everybody wants to get out of here to enjoy Jazz on the Grass, um, at the library. July 13th, there's in-person registration for the Calumet City Chargers National Youth Football Team, and that is on my page, Alderman Wilson dot com, uh, you can also follow that on social media sites. Uh, July 14th, I will be celebrating and hosting on behalf of Cook County Commissioner Donna Miller, her hats off to women empowerment, uh, you can go to my page, there are tickets still available to attend that, that's gonna be at the, uh, Ravenslo Country Club. On, uh, July 15th, I will go live on my social media page, um, at 10 AM. We are going to announce the nominees for the Vision of We Awards. The Vision of We Awards will be held Saturday, August 17th, at the VFW at 664 Hirsch Street. Right now, uh, when I got up this morning, we were at 98 nominations. I did not take the nominations down or close them yet, so you can go to Alderman Wilson dot com, nominate a neighbor that does well in the community and goes unnoticed or underappreciated, a young person that is a volunteer, a small business, we're gonna narrow the nominations down, but, uh, we will go live to announce who the honorees will be, and five honorees will receive a Presidential Lifetime Achievement, Achievement Award signed by, uh, President Biden. And again, that information is on Alderman Wilson dot com. On, uh, July 20th, it's a national holiday, that is my birthday, I will be in Las Vegas honoring both of my boys who are receiving a Lifetime Achievement Award from President Joe Biden, um, for their work as volunteers here in Calumet City and, um, Atlanta, Georgia. On August 3rd, we are having the Vision of We Community Day in the parking lot of 79 Street BBQ, which is located at 1719 River Oaks Drive, that will run from 11 AM to 4 PM, we will have resource tables for everyone in the community, youth, uh, our seniors, uh, we have giveaways, uh, games, uh, free food outside, and then we have discounted food inside the restaurant. Um, we have secured KB Evans Experience Soul inside the restaurant, they will be performing live with the band, the cost of admission is just school supplies, bring a book bag, bring a pack, pack of paper, uh, bring some pencils, again, we all are going through this together and it's the vision of we. So just bring something, those school supply donations will then be donated to the church at 415 Saginaw for the Second Ward Partnership Back to School Event on August 31st. All of this information will be, um, loaded on my website, Alderman Wilson dot com, you can click the link to go to my social media pages, um, from that. Again, thank you, should you need me, call me, um, I do have to give a special shout out to Mr. Robert Cox for calling me on my cellphone today, that mean, and he got it from watching this, uh, live, so thank you.
You done, Alderman?
I think, well, for right now, I remember some stuff, but I'll wait till later.
Alright, I got you. Alright, First Ward, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief, uh, to respect everyone's time, I think we've touched on all the important topics, uh, obviously, um, over the last, uh, month or so, um, since everyone's been receiving those tax bills, it's been the, um, number one issue for phone calls that I've received, and, and of course, everyone's, uh, working towards the common goal to try to straighten this out, so, um, on August 7th, um, I will have a, a Town Hall Meeting at 6 PM at the VFW, uh, that's at 664 Hirsch, on the corner of Hirsch and, um, Pulaski, not too far up the road here, uh, again, that's gonna be August 7th at 6 PM, uh, the initial agenda that was announced was to talk about economic development, um, to touch on the progress of, uh, the Burnham Avenue Revitalization Plan, along with the State Street, um, DSR Plan, and, uh, grants received for Riverside Drive, uh, for the First Ward, um, we will give an update at that Town Hall Meeting on any other new information, uh, regarding the property taxes, so we'll try not to take up the entire meeting on that topic, but, uh, again, I, I, I feel like, uh, you know, everyone deserves an update and see where we're at, um, come August 7th, so we will touch on that, um, as well, so, uh, also, just wanna give a shout out to, um, the, uh, Mayor's Office and the Clerk's So also, just want to give a shout out to the mayor's office and the clerk's office for the help with helping coordinate the Shepherd's Fest. This is a combination of the St. Andrews Family Fest and the St. Victor's Fest that used to be in town, is now combined under one festival. It would be at the Our Lady of Knock Worship Site, located on the south end of town. I don't have that address, but I will have it at the next meeting. There will be additional announcements. The festival is August 16th, August 17th, and August 18th. And there will be live music, food, kids' carnival rides, and activities for residents to come out and enjoy themselves. So again, we'll have another announcement for that. But again, thank you to those who, for all the help from the clerk's office and the mayor's office again. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may. Our Lady of Knock, 501 163rd Street, it's located in the beautiful Sixth Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. You know, I usually don't respond to residents who come up to public forum because that's the residents' time to talk to the city council and to the city. But I want to address, and I've said this, that tonight, we have a protest that Alderman Tillman just mentioned protesting taxes. I've said this, and I say it again. County Men's City has not raised taxes, and we are not responsible for the reassessment. There are 11 tax bills and taxing bodies on the tax bill. County Men's City has not raised taxes in four or five years, and probably longer than that. We just had our director come up and present our budget. I am as pissed off as anybody because my taxes went up as well. And we're going to demand that Cook County Assessor Fritz Kegge come to County Men's City and explain to every resident and every elected official, the assessment and why he's switching the taxes from residential, from business owners to residents. It is squarely in the hands of Fritz Kegge for assessments and property taxes. The County Men's City is not responsible for the high tax bills that you got. It is squarely in Fritz Kegge's hand. And I'm going to direct our city attorney to consider filing a class action lawsuit against Cook County and Fritz Kegge. And we'll ask every member to join that class action lawsuit, and every community to join that class action lawsuit against the county, against Fritz Kegge, and ask them to reassess our area. I mentioned in addition to that, that I'm filing the bill in Springfield to encourage the governor and the county to have a flat tax rate for communities that are suffering. We are a border community. We know that a bunch of people go across the border for many consumer products. We understand that. But we also understand that we shouldn't be held hostage by our location, and we shouldn't be held hostage by Fritz Kegge, who has never come to County Men's City and talked about these taxes except once. Now, we know that senior exemptions, we know homestead exemptions matter, we know veterans' exemptions matter, but we also understand that Fritz Kegge should not be taking the taxes from businesses and putting it on homeowners. That is not a proper way to do that. He admitted in the paper, probably in January, that he made a mistake with assessments. He said that in the paper, that he made a mistake with assessments. We'll own up to your mistakes, Mr. Kegge, and reassess County Men's City, reassess other communities, because we can't take it anymore. My taxes went up just like everyone else. The city council has told the public that we're going to fight for you. We're going to do that. And we're going to make sure that everyone is involved in this process. So if we can file the class action lawsuit, that is going to be the first step. I believe we have a private right of action. We have a lot of attorneys here that can tell us that we do have a private right of action to file against the county, and let's see where it goes. So this is the first step. We're going to make sure that we call out Fritz Kegge and make him come to County Men's City, explain to you, the residents, why these taxes are going up. Because again, County Men's City has not raised your taxes. We have been responsible with taxpayers' money, and we're going to continue to do so. And we're going to fight for our residents and fight for these high ass tax bills. So I wanted to say that and let you know, I respect everyone that comes up. I don't like, we always get back to you, but I want to make sure I make that statement and let you know that this city is going to fight for you and fight to get these taxes reduced. Now, I can't promise that these taxes are going to be reduced. I cannot do that. When we go back to Springfield in November, we have to encourage the Cook County Assessor to do a reassessment and give you a tax refund back. Those taxes that are due August 1st still have to be paid. I'm not encouraging anyone not to pay the taxes. There's a protest that you can do. There's a process that you can do. We're going to encourage Fritz Kegge to stand right here, just like we asked the residents to do, and stand before you and work with this city and ask him to work with our communities in the Southland as we come up with solutions. And we have to find a better way to fund our taxes. We have to find a better way. We're going to work with Fritz Kegge, but we're going to demand that he come here before this council and before the residents. Our next item on the agenda is informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Item A is a notice for detour routes. If everyone know that there are routes, construction that is going on, Matt Berger will tell us later in the meeting, where we have construction going on in County Men's City. But we want to encourage everyone to follow those detour routes in and out of County Men's City. So item A is informational items to be placed on file. Is there a motion to approve item 8A?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderwoman Wilson. All in favor? Item 8A is approved by consensus. Item 9A, 9, 1 through 10 are new business action items. Items 2, 3, 4 are requests from different organizations that want to use the Sears parking lot. I'm taking a different approach than last year. Last year, I wanted to, when these items came in, the mayor's office made the decision, I would like the council involved in this. The Sears parking lot is used because the Park District gets overcrowded. So I'm putting all of these on the agenda. We have three items and three requests tonight from Simeon Alumni Association, Morgan Park, Blue and Gold Group, to utilize the Sears parking lot. In addition to that, we also have item 10 on the agenda, requested by Alderman Navarrete, that the city council started the process looking for a headhunter to do a search for Community and Economic Development Director. Are there any questions regarding items 9, 1 through 10?
We had question, well, on the parking lot usage, but the question that came, that was asked of us, it's a potential lawsuit, so we would not be able to speak on it out It's not pending. It may be.
Before executive session, do you want to go in executive session? Alderman, if we can do it at the end of the meeting, we haven't received anything for litigation. Sears is owned by the city, so anyone that wants to sue the city, they have to contact city attorney.
Okay, so what do we, what do you want us to?
Well, anyone that wants to use a Sears parking lot, they have to get insurance. They have to go through the steps, and they have to submit the request.
So it wasn't that, and all of these individuals clearly did that.
Yes.
It was that an employee asked them to pay to park. That's what it was. And that has been made public.
If you can send me that information, we'd have to just deal with, yeah. But the process for using Sears for the Forest Reserve and using the Sears parking lot is simple. Letter of intent, and then also, they have to have insurance to protect the city. That's all that we require, and that the organization be registered. So currently, we have probably 20 events that's going on at the Forest Reserve, and we ask the Forest Reserve and the sponsoring group to submit a letter to the city, along with a copy of the insurance, certificate of insurance, holding the city harmless.
So just to clarify, all they have to do is have an insurance policy for the day or whatever? They don't have to pay a fee to the city or to anybody else?
No.
No.
I got a question. This potential lawsuit, it's because the person had to pay, or they didn't have to pay, but they were approached to pay. Oh, okay. So they didn't pay, they just?
They are alleging that we are.
Charging to.
Charging and kicking back.
And that's not the case, right, Mayor?
No, he just said no.
I mean, they would have to identify the employee, because, I mean, no employee's going to direct them.
They did.
Please get that information to the attorney, because, yeah. And ask them to identify the date, because this is the first I'm hearing of this.
It went out to the entire graduating class that they've ever had at the school.
So if they rented a space from the Cook County Forest Reserve, and that's different than our property at Sears, so our property at Sears is for strictly parking only?
Yes. So they have their permit, but they were trying to negotiate parking at Sears. They did park there last year. They did follow what was requested to park there. And to our knowledge, like you just said, none of that has changed. Except for this caveat.
Well, if you can give that information to the city attorney.
Okay.
But please have them put it in writing, because people change their mind and change their stories. So we want to make sure if they're going to accuse a city employee, that they put it in writing, identifying them, and we'll have the police department and our city attorney Item 9, 1 through 10 are new action items. Are there any questions regarding items 1 through 10? If not, can someone make a motion to approve items 9, 1 through 10?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete, second by Alderman Smith. Smith, last.
No, Smith Gardner, I had a question after.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Gardner.
Correct.
And Alderman Navarrete for questioning.
Thank you, Mayor. Just on item number 10, did we have a estimated time to complete? Is that something that we were hoping to have on the agenda or posted when? Do we have a date on that? On how long that RFP would take? Couple weeks. That was all. Thank you. And the process again is just, I'm sorry, process again is RFP. And then from there, there's no RFP needed, just an RFP, and then we kind of go from there? Or should this be an RFP? Like asking for costs to do the search, or?
Since this is a service, we can do a RFP, and then we'll include the information that was forwarded by you as well when we start that process. So we'll just do a RFP and include the company as well.
Well, I just want to make sure that, so we'll get the qualifications for the company, but that doesn't necessarily know how much they're going to charge. We're not going to know. I'm just saying, after we do the RFP and we find out qualified contractors to perform the search, then we negotiate a price there, or do we have to issue an RFP? No, we could just negotiate prices from there. Okay.
More general with the RFP?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, attorney.
We had a motion to approve by Alderman Smith, a second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Items 9 through 1 are approved, 7 to 0. Thank you, city council. Item 10, our new business items, building permits. Are there any questions regarding the four building permits, new fence requests on the agenda? Any corrections?
Yes, Mayor, the item number 3, 1534 Burnham, that's in the sixth.
We got new maps.
We'll have Director Tillman confirm, if we can approve the addresses, and then have Director Tillman confirm item 3, that address. So is there a motion to approve the new fence items that are on the agenda? Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Smith. Patton. Gardner.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 11 are resolutions. I don't have the resolution for my nephew, who is on the Puerto Rican Olympian team. So I want to congratulate George Condit for being Olympian. They're going to face the United States of America soon in their round in division. I told him that I will be rooting for the United States of America, though. So maybe a little conflict, so when he comes back, we'll have him come to the city council. But we have item, I would ask the council to approve the resolutions, and we will present them. I know Alderman Gardner has requested the resolution, and we're not going to read the resolution, but we definitely want to thank everyone that came out to the services for Alderman Gardner's grandmother. It was well attended. Alderman Gardner, thank you for having us as well. So Alderman Tillman, is there a motion to approve the resolutions as presented?
Yes, so move.
Motion to approve by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Item 12 are new business financial matters. Are there any 1 through 29?
Yes, Mayor. Go ahead. Sorry. Two things I would like to, item number 23.
What's your direction with the Alderman?
I would like to make a motion to remove this item.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
To remove item 23. Second by Alderman Patton.
Just want to have discussion.
Okay.
This item was recently brought to and deferred to the Finance Committee for review. After having several conversations with the city attorney, she issued a legal opinion regarding the usage of public funds to block clubs. It does not permit the city to use public funds for block clubs. So this item is being removed.
Mayor, I did read the opinion, and I was going to ask if we can, I wasn't sure if it was proper to go in executive session, but the legal opinion came out today. I thought it did say that we couldn't give grants, but we could, and I could be mistaken, but we couldn't use neighborhood accounts. So the mayor's neighborhood account is the account listed here today. So we could use neighborhood accounts, but we couldn't use grants, or is it public funds altogether?
My understanding is that each alderman gets a certain amount annually for neighborhood events. And this certainly would fall within that for an alderman.
My understanding is that all, each alderman gets a certain amount annually for neighborhood events, and this certainly would fall within that for an alderman to use part of his or her stipend to pay for this event.
Or the mayor.
Or the mayor.
Or the clerk.
But it's coming out of the mayor's account. If the mayor gets the same type of stipend, yes.
Okay, nice one.
And I, and I don't know, because it just came up this afternoon, for me, does the village have a, the city have a policy about what the money can be used for? Probably not. So I would recommend that we have a policy which we can put together, so that it's only used for, so that we describe the events that it's used for, and the specific items that it's used for. So, for example, you can buy a keg at Rupert, but you can't buy a keg of old stuff. You know, that, well, I'm serious, like, you know, that type of, that type of stuff. You can use it for food, for entertainment, so the types of things you're using it for, and the types of items that are prohibited.
Attorney Sturke, can you talk into the mic more so we can?
Oh, sorry.
Make sure we record it properly.
Right.
So, so is it proper or not proper, item 20?
So, it's coming out of the mayor's fund?
Because it's public funds.
To my knowledge. It should, it should, it should come out of the elected official's stipend, that's my point, rather than it just come out of the city, come out of the city treasury.
Well, the language of this states that private block parties should not be funded with general city funds.
Right.
So to my knowledge, no funds should be used for block parties, or block clubs.
Right, and that's the conflicting language that I'm talking about, because I've read that too, and as you continue to read, it seems to be a little confusion.
I think, I think the confusion is, it sounds like, and maybe I'm wrong, Attorney Sturke, but it sounds like the attorney is under the impression that the money that we get is not directly from the city, like, we get a stipend to then go spend on neighborhood things, is that what you're, because the funds we're talking about are city funds?
Right.
That are just earmarked for different things, so can, since it's coming directly from the city funds, can we use it for something like this?
If it's coming out of your, if it's coming out of the alderman's stipend, or the mayor's stipend, then yes. And that, but I'm, we're, I'm recommending that we have, that the city develop a policy going forward about how the funds can be used, under what circumstances.
I would caution, because I read the opinion also, and it was a little conflicting, because as we just stated, the source of funds is still government funds. I think the best practice, or better practice, would be to just direct the funds directly to a certain source, if you're gonna buy food or something, just direct the funds directly to the source, rather than just give it to an organization that can spend it improperly, potentially. So that would, you know, that would be my recommendation.
I agree with that.
Would you like the little column?
Yeah, yeah. So we have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion period. I will just say this, block clubs have come, and the question has been, if 19 block clubs come to the city saying they want support for their block club, can the city provide that? And if the city wants to develop a policy, then develop that policy. But I don't think the block clubs are coming here in vain and telling us that they're not gonna use the money for its intended purpose. If it's the wishes of the council to have and donate products to companies, create that policy. If it's, if you want to go to Sam's Club and tell the block club to submit us, you know, your list, so we can support your block club, do that. But if it's the wishes of the council to do that, your motion, Alderman, is to remove this item, but if it's your intention to bring this back, per the attorney, create some policy around this, and put a limit on the number of block clubs that can come before the city and make that request. So, that's all I would ask the council to do.
Mayor, I think we're open to that. We're just looking at the piece of it that specifically says, should not be funded with general city funds. I'm okay with supporting block clubs, I don't think any other alderman is opposed to supporting block clubs. At this point, we've been given a legal opinion, and I just want to hear to it.
Okay. So your, the motion on the floor is to remove item 23, there's a motion and a second, you've had discussion. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on item 23?
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
May I ask, so it's removing, but we can bring it back?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
Just for the council benefit, the, the group came before us, and the date is August 3rd, so I would, would ask if the council can, if it's the intention to work with the block club, the date that was given to the block club, or given to us is not August 12th, it's August 3rd. So, City Attorney, I would ask that you move with speed to draft a policy around what kind of support we can give to block clubs.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Gardner, your wishes on the remaining financial matters?
Emergency bill list, I would like to make a motion to remove items that exceed the $1,000 limit per our ordinance, Sounds of Authority, Municipal Systems, Vantage Production Group, and Alafia Production Group, and defer it to a future bill listing for approval.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner for those items, is there a second?
Could you repeat that motion? And which items?
I would like to make a motion to remove.
Can you speak up a little bit, Alderman?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to remove Sounds of Authority, these items from the bill list, Sounds of Authority.
Emergency bill list.
Emergency, I'm sorry, emergency bill list, Sounds of Authority, Municipal Systems, Vantage Production Group, Alafia Production Group, and defer them to a future bill list for approval. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll for those items to remove from the emergency bill list?
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman, on the other items on the agenda, financial matters?
Yes. Under the bill list, I would like to make a motion to remove items, CDM Entertainment, Jack's Sounds.
Need camera.
Jack's, Jack's Sounds, Jason Grant, and all the other Jazz on the Grass expenditures to be deferred, to come out of the Library Special Events Account, 02007-52993.
So the motion on the floor is to remove those items from the city bill listing, and to correct the count for those items, for the Jazz on the Grass, will be the account stated by the Alderman on the record. What's the account number, Alderman?
Second for discussion.
Second by Alderman Patton.
Are we gonna ask the same question?
I would just speak on, myself and the city clerk, and ask for a list of all the specific vendors, so we don't accidentally pay something that was, was the intention of the council to remove, so if you could, we could be provided with a specific list of all the vendors.
Sure.
I'm sure the clerk would appreciate that.
Sure.
Alderman Patton.
Yeah, I've got a question about that. Are we, do we have the authority to reclassify something to a library line item, or do we have to remove those bills and refer them to the Library Board?
The proper motion would be to remove them and refer them to Library.
Let's do that.
So if you want to amend...
I'll rescind my second.
Alderman, do you rescind your first?
I'll rescind my motion.
So the proper motion would be to remove those items and refer those items to the Library Board for approval.
So I would like to make a motion to defer Jazz on the Grass related expenditures to the Library Board for approval.
Second.
And to remove them from the bill list.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on the amended motion?
Smith.
Yes.
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Gardner, on the rest of the items?
Last but not least, I would like to make a motion to approve items one through 22.
Motion made to approve items one through 22, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Alderman Patton for discussion.
There's a question about number four, is this a monthly fee? Or is this a one-time retainer?
It's a one-time retainer, Alderman.
Should we amend that to reflect that, or?
If it comes up again, I think we'll know.
So services have already been rendered?
Services are being rendered for...
June 20th till...
Land Bank, yes.
And the services were for, do we know?
Service report just came in on the properties, yes.
Are they for property-related services?
Property-related.
This is Land Bank, Land Bank stuff?
Yeah, Land Bank, tax certificates, first-time home buyers program, this is what this is for.
Do we anticipate any further cost with this, or is that just like a one-time, that's gonna cover us on all the work that's been done?
We do anticipate more cost for that.
I had a question, Mayor, about...
Before we move on, before we move on.
Okay.
So, do we have an anticipated cost of what the services will be?
No, I can get that to you, Alderman.
Can we approve the anticipated cost prior to the bills coming in?
Yes, I would say, yes. Attorney said yes.
Yes, yeah, because these services have already been rendered, and now we're approving the bill. It'd be nice to approve the services before they're rendered, but thank you for the clarification.
Alderman, is this question on item four?
What's item four?
Is that, is that item four?
Is it? We were trying to see if we can do it.
The emergency, the emergency items that were removed?
That's it.
So our systems are running just a tad bit behind. So, sorry, our systems are running a tad bit, so we're trying to ping off of each other's system, but we may have, you printed it out, a motion to reconsider?
So let's, yeah, continue this, yeah.
We have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion phase on items one through 22. So if there's no more questions about items one through 22, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on items one through 22, and then we'll go back to the discussion.
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Alderman, items, well, let's go to the question for reconsideration.
Should that be done at the end of the meeting?
Is there a certain item, Alderman, for?
It looks like everything that we need for the weekend.
These have already been paid.
They have already been paid.
Yes, for the sake of not violating our ordinance tonight, which I stated, our cap is $1,000, so these can go on a future bill list, for clarification.
Thank you for that clarification, but they have already been, we just didn't want any issue, okay.
That's why they appeared on the emergency bill list, because they have already been, checks have already been cut.
Okay.
Okay, we are okay over here.
Alderman Gardner, continue, items 24.
Last but not least, I would like to make a motion to approve items 24 through 29, as so presented.
As so amended, correct?
So amended, I'm sorry.
So amended. Alderman Gardner makes a motion to approve items 24 through 29, as so amended, seconded by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Well, sir.
So looking at the past budget, there, there was some, it was a difference in the amount previously budgeted for the Little League?
Yes, that amount.
Are we increasing that moving forward?
That is correct, Alderman. On item 25, the correct amount should be $2,500, Alderman.
But we can take a look at it and increase it moving forward?
Yes.
While we're in the budget?
Yes. So is your motion to leave this, or to amend this? Item 24, 25.
Amend.
Is it the consensus to leave it where it is currently budgeted, and then budget for a higher amount during budget talks?
I'm fine with that, yes, I'm fine with that.
I don't think it would go any higher than what it stated right here on 25, though.
No, it's not. So if it, if that's the case, if you, if your request is to leave it right there, then the motion, just keep the same motion that we're voting on right now. So don't amend it, if there's a motion on the floor and a second, to keep it at the certain, at the amount that it's on the agenda. So if you want to change that, you can change that, and just increase it in the budget. So Alderman, we'll direct the treasurer to answer the question regarding item 25, and then to clear up what the council...
Okay, because we were looking at the budget.
Thanks, Mayor. Just so everyone is on the same page, the, the amount that you want to award this particular organization is well within the purview of the City Council to do so, in whatever amount you deem necessary or appropriate. But understand that this is, this is not a retro pay, the old fiscal year is closed. This payment, it will be, we are operating in the 2024, 25 fiscal year budget, so this is the current budget. So, just so everybody understands, that there won't be a second payment for this year, whatever payment is made will be the one and only payment in, within this fiscal year. Does everyone understand that?
So, yes, we want to put at the budgeted amount, or make a motion at the budgeted amount that we have.
So, let's withdraw, let's withdraw the motion by Alderman Gardner and the second by Alderman Smith.
I withdraw my motion.
Alderman. So the proper motion to approve... So the proper motion to approve items twenty-four through twenty-nine and then twenty-five as amended, the amended motion for items twenty-five should be at the amount of $2,500 per the budget from the line item stated in item twenty-five. That should be the proper motion, Alderman Gardner.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve items twenty-four through twenty-nine with item number twenty-five as amended.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you call the motion on the amended item?
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton. Smith. Navarrete.
Yes. Thank you, Council, for that. To everyone's surprise, we do not have executive session tonight.
Amen.
So we'll go around for unfinished business. Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, if I could request payment of the PO for the back-to-school event, it is possible that maybe I'm missing a step. If you could help out with, I know we discussed it before. But yeah, if we can try to resolve that one. And I'll send an email just to point it out, but appreciate the help. That's all I had this evening, thank you.
Okay. Unfinished business, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. August tenth is the second ward block meeting, and again, we will be meeting and gathering at the House of Wanda Smith, and family are hosting us again, and that's August tenth. I would like to thank Maria and Sasha from the mayor's office for their assistance in walking myself and my chief of staff through Suggard, and we are now ready to spend within the limits and the guidelines on the needs of our ward, so we are very appreciative. Thank you. See everyone in a few minutes, and again, if you need me, call or text me, seven oh eight, five eight six, four nine nine zero. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, happy belated birthday to our city clerk, Dr. Ingo de Tveigs.
Thank you. Alderman Tillman?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Williams, unfinished business?
Just if anybody has any concerns, please don't hesitate to call the ward, seven oh eight, two one two, two two four zero, or seven oh eight, eight nine one, eight one nine four. Thank you, and happy birthday, Dr. Figs.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy birthday, Dr. Figs. May God bless you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner, I'm Alderman Patton.
I will wish our clerk a happy birthday, even though I texted her on her actual birthday.
Alderman Smith, unfinished business?
Yes, just want to let the residents know that the Seven Four will be offering school suppliers. If you are in need of school suppliers, please contact the office by email, email asmith@caymetsity.org. School Board 157 is having its back-to-school event on August the 24th. The Seven Four will be supporting that event. If you have any questions, please contact my office. That event is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, August the 24th, at Hoover Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. There being no further business to come before the City Council, is there a motion to adjourn at 8:01 PM?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, is there a second? I was gonna say, y'all want to stay here longer? Second by Alderman Patton. All in favor? Meeting adjourned at 8:01 PM. Thank you, Alderman.